...of classical music every day.
Northwest Public.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Public Works Finance Committee of City of Moscow on Monday, December the 12th. The first order of business is the approval of the Public Works Finance Committee meeting minutes from November the 28th.
And they look fine.
And I was not there, so you were the only one attending.
But I'm sure you read them.
I did read them, but I wouldn't.
So they're accounts?
Okay. We'll consider them approved. Okay, Mr. Redner, the disbursement report for November of 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see, I won't read the different expenditures to you, but you will see that we are, this is one of our lightest months that we've had in several months, just happens to be where the expenses come down. You have also the cash and investments sheet showing where the city is from a financial standpoint. We have some major expenditures from last month. The big ones are the Whitcom October through December payment in the amount of $128,511.84. ML Albright &amp; Sons for Third Street Reconstruction Sewer and Water out of the Street Department as well, $147,911.82. And ML Albright &amp; Sons for the F Street Water Main Break in the amount of $99,631.38, major expenditures.
Gary, do you know, is that the total for that water line break work, the 99?
No, that is...
Partial?
Yes. I don't have a breakdown. I think Les gave a report on that some time ago. Perhaps you are gone, but we can get that information to you. And with that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Yes, ma'am.
No, I don't have any questions. I was just remembering if it was Tyler with the report.
Oh, that's right, it was Tyler.
I thought it was Tyler. Yeah, okay, I was just trying to think. Okay.
What do you attribute the light month to? Just cash flow?
It just has to do with when bills are submitted. We're coming down to the tail end of construction payments. We'll see some changes next month as retainages are paid out and those sorts of things, but it's just the flow of cash.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we will accept the report and sign the book. While we're doing that, we'll move ahead with Alyssa Anderson, a National Law Enforcement Curriculum Alive at 25 item, and joined by Chief Frye.
I don't sign this, do I?
Yes, you will. Change the name, yeah. Yeah, change, just take "Art" off and "Chairman" off and sign. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Good, everyone.
Good.
Let's see which one's on the, child's seat is on the agenda first.
Child's seat first.
Okay. So this is a program that the Police Department has participated in since 2003, and it has continued to grow, and now they are the lead agency that moves forward with actually being the fiscal agent. So all the money comes through the City of Moscow, and then they have other agencies that they work with. ITD even had a few seats last year that were still available, and those were allowed to come here because they know that, that our officers are really good at getting them out to the people that need them, and, and so we just want to go ahead and renew the program that we had from last year. They have a new format, which I think is, you know, it's a good idea. ITD's gotten more involved in it, whereas the, I think it was the Association of Pediatric, can't remember the exact name, was involved before, but the, the new letter that we're going to be sending in after approval actually required some statistics and a little more information, so it was good for us to be able to put that together and establish some goals and objectives for, for what we're doing and putting that in writing. And so we're asking for your permission to go ahead and submit the, the letter, which is included in the packet for the request. And the dollar amount is similar to last year. The city doesn't have any cash to put into it, but they do get to count their teaching hours, and Marie is one of the teachers who is certified to do the class, and so her contribution through those hours is what makes up the difference for the in-kind.
Chief, do you know, you'll do several hundred seats, don't you?
I can tell you this, this last year, we provided, so last year, we provided 220 seats up to low-income families with an increase of 94 seats. This year, we checked 472 with an increase of 238 compared to the 238 checks from the year before. So we've almost doubled our output as well as our checks.
That's great.
And your checks are done with the assistance of Lewiston and who else?
We have 11 technicians now. So you have Lewiston, you have, I think, the, that's first tribe has some people, Lewiston Police, I think Gritman Hospital has some. We're looking at even getting the Fire Department involved with some of their volunteers possibly, but we're starting to expand this program out to where we have more than just the five or six that normally do it.
Okay.
Yeah, my question had to do with also, isn't it the Safety Fair?
We do it at the Safety Fair. We also do it at the National Night Out, and then they do a couple of other ones regionally around. They did one down in Lewiston, so they, they do quite an outreach.
Do you do any during the fair?
We have not, but you know, that would be something we could look, look at. The toughest part is, is having it set up so it's safe for the cars to come in and leave, so the fairgrounds would...
If the fair might be problematic.
Well, no, I didn't necessarily think of it in that, in that way. I thought you could do a demonstration, or you could have a booth or something like that.
We have a booth there, and that actually would be one of the things we could put in. We could just show people how to properly at least set them up. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the fair comes at an odd time for us where we already have to have all of our money spent by that time and have our requests ends, because it comes at the end of the fiscal year, so, and we haven't had a new award yet, so we don't really have, unless they did it just through their volunteer.
We could just do it through our volunteers, though.
Yeah, I just figured for education.
It's an educational piece.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it'd still work. Anything?
I just think it's great. I like to hear that you've doubled it twice now. That's good.
Yeah, you know, ITD, they've sent one of the, actually, Sherry.
Mm-hmm. Sherry Jenkins.
She came up to the last one we did, because we have such a proactive approach to it that she wanted to see everybody in action, and they love what we do here, and they, they compare us to Boise City and those with how much output we're doing and how much education we're giving. So it's a good thing.
This program is actually larger than the one they have in District One, that where people come together as, as, you know, one group and have one fiscal agent that manages everything, and it makes it a lot easier for ITD.
I think part of the biggest reason that it's so popular is, a lot of places, it would just be Boise City. We, we have so many partners. I mean, we have, in 2016, we have Valley Medical, Quad City Nissan, Palouse Care, Anasotan County that we've added to the list, probably another 10. So we're reaching out and actually collaborating with a bunch of other agencies and, and groups.
Okay. Approved? All right. Let's do the next item, and then we'll talk for a second about whether to go to consent or use an opportunity before council to advertise some of this maybe. And now we'll do the Alive at 25.
Okay. So the contract that we do for Alive at 25 is, has no monetary value. The police officers here prefer to just have access to the materials, and that's why we go through the contract process. The reimbursement process is very extensive, and it's almost so extensive that it's not worth their time to document it. They would be doing, they want to do these classes, and, and so we've normally just went through the contract part, and then they provide us all the materials we need for free. And then they've also paid for all of our teachers to be certified, and they pay all the expenses for them to go to Boise to do that. So we're basically just renewing our contract in order to get the materials, the updated materials this year, and I guess there's some new videos and DVDs and things, so. And ITD is also, I think you've heard me mention this in the past, also with the police mobilizations, all of these programs are now going into their Web Cars program, and they're requiring them all to have all the certifications and assurances and the civil rights requirements and everything that you see. A lot of these programs in the past, we didn't have these types of contracts. They were just a one or two-page thing, and it was just a paperwork process. And so not only do we have, you know, all the reporting to do, but we also upload everything, and the officers can report directly into the system on, on everything too, which has made the process a lot easier, and then it's, it's much more streamlined.
My question had to do with the acronym, the RUWA, or whatever, however you would...
So recognize the hazard, understand the defense, and act correctly.
Yeah. I was just, what I was curious about was, was one of the hazards considered texting, and then, and then there wasn't, unless I missed it, information specifically regarding that, and since that's become such a large issue, I was kind of...
They, they talk about texting, drunk driving, inattentive driving, distracted driving. They go through a whole, you know, and basically they, they show these young adults the hazards of what can happen when you're doing that, and, and why you don't, and, and why you put your phone down, and why you don't drive drunk and all. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty impressive four-hour course that they put them through. There's, there've been numerous individuals come out of those courses that say, you know, I wish I'd had this when I was younger, so...
But you couldn't, because they were under 18.
You know, and some, and some of it's attached to a citation, so we, we, they have an opportunity, if they get a citation, to go through this course and have the citation taken care of because of the course that they went through as a learning and educational piece, so.
Again, again, do you know any numbers of how many kids are, go through this?
I don't, I don't have the exact numbers that we've done, but I know that they put on, we're one of the busier areas, and actually, I think we put on a course once a month, and there's usually about 20 individuals in those courses. It's, it's full over the Police Department.
And that's the nine months of the school year?
Yeah.
Good.
We'll reach a lot.
Excuse me. They sprung a new contract on us out of the blue, coming up with it, we usually do this after the first of the year, and so I got this from Margaret just like week before last, and we just, Gary, we needed to get some, you know, we wanted to get it on the agenda and get it taken care of, so we didn't have the normal statistic to report because we didn't have a chance to put it together on the class numbers, so we can make sure that that goes out in the packet.
Okay, well, I think we, we can prove this as well. Mayor, if you don't mind, see what your next council meeting agenda looks like, and if you have, need a room for some PR to put this information out at the council meeting, we could do it as an, as an item rather than a consent. If you're tight, then they can go to consent, we'll, we'll approve them, if that's okay, sir.
Not a problem. These three councils are one, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Because it's always a good thing, it's a good thing for our city on the safety issues that we have, with the Police Department, so I think it's a good thing. Walter, I don't see a problem with that.
Let, let people know that these programs are out there, and they can ask...
Yep, absolutely. It's a good deal for our community, so absolutely. James on the front line here is...
I'll probably, if you don't mind, I'll bring Officer Miller, who is our car seat. She's done this for years, yeah.
Well, then she'd be perfect, man. Maybe even give her a chance to speak a little bit.
She would. She could give you really the sell of how this program has started to evolve, and really the, the benefits of it, because she is our lead on that, so if you're okay with that, I'll, I'll bring her.
And for those that haven't been to, to that Safety Fair, it's a big deal for us, so, yeah, absolutely.
And Officer, and I never pronounce his last name correctly.
Seaverden.
Seaverden is the one that manages the Alive at 25.
Just to reinforce the idea of the statistics, though, on the Alive at 25, that'd be kind of cool to see, if you wouldn't mind. If it's not like reinventing the wheel.
No, we have it. I, actually, I know I have a spreadsheet, too.
And the intent of, of doing it in the open, in the open meeting is to let the people know that don't, that these programs are out there, they're available, and, there.
It's a cool, there are two great programs here, too. This is important to have that moment of sunshine.
Yep.
So...
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thanks, guys.
Okay. Jessie Flowers to talk to us about an intergovernmental agreement to provide mutual assistance for information system services between the City of Moscow, Idaho, and the City of Pullman, Washington.
Yeah. We've recently leased a fiber over to Pullman to facilitate data communication over to Whitcom for dispatch and radio traffic. With that additional capacity, we have a lot more opportunity to help each other, and we're both similar-sized organizations, doing a very similar function, and part of the goal, we've had several meetings with Wayne and their staff about how can we help each other, and what expertise can we lend when we need it. So this agreement doesn't give any obligation to do anything or any costs associated with it. It just is merely putting in place a framework that we have the appropriate responses and authority to respond and help people when we need it. You know, if there's an outage or just working on a project that we have an expertise or they do, we are easily able to come over and give us a hand. We're just being potentially moving ahead with, potentially storing our offsite backups at each other's data centers or various other tools where we can use that link and provide a better quality of service for both cities.
And there would be no compensation either way?
Correct.
And it would be as needed on call?
As needed, and if we have the capacity to assist with it or not. There's no formal requirement either way.
Both equipment and personnel?
Correct.
Okay.
And both agencies would own their own equipment if they co-locate it, and it would be returned at the end of any use, et cetera, so. It's just merely putting it down so that we can help each other and make sure we have a good framework to move ahead with that.
All right.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Yes, sir. That's good.
Okay. I think that one can go to consent.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jessie.
Michael Ray with another lot line adjustment. Do you go looking for these, Mike, or just lucky?
Just lucky.
I don't think so either.
Introduce yourself.
I'm Ryan Cash, I'm the new planner.
Planner one.
I'm going to be taking over for Becky's position, and I'm the newest member to the Community Development Team.
Oh, welcome.
Well, it's a pleasure meeting you.
Yeah, I was going to introduce Ryan, but he beat me to it there, so. Well, we're here today to present a lot line adjustment. It's on King Road for two contiguous parcels, 1118 and 1122. Outlined in red at the center of your screen, I've got Taylor Avenue, U of I campus here to the north, Taylor running east-west, turns into Valenta, loops around, King Road access off of Taylor, and a private Queen Road, which accesses an apartment complex there. Primarily student apartment residential housing in this area. We've got single-family housing as you go up Valenta Drive, but along Taylor and King Road, primarily multifamily housing. Looking at the zoning configuration of the area, it's in the R4, which is our multifamily zone. West side of Valenta and the University Heights addition, R1, would be the single-family residential zoning district, and then to the north of Taylor Avenue is the university zoning district. So what the R4 zone says is that you have to have a minimum lot width of 50 feet, 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. The setbacks for that zone are going to be 15 feet in the front, 20 if you have a garage facing the street, rear yard is 20, street side's 13, side yard's 5, but both sides have to equal 15. And then we have flag lots, which are defined by the zoning code as a lot with access provided to the part of the lot designated for use as a building site by a narrow corridor. So typically, you have a 20-foot-wide access drive, which ends up going out into a, a larger usable lot where the, the building portion is. The zoning code says that they can't exceed 150 feet in length for the flagpole portion, and it can't exceed 20 feet in width, or can't be less than 20 feet in width, excuse me. And there, there really is no limitation to how narrow or, or large that flagpole can be. So in this case, proposed to be 40 feet in width. These are the current two lots, 118 King here, center of your screen, and then there's 1122 King here to the east. You have a single-family dwelling on 1118 as well as 1122 King. This is the proposed lot line adjustment, so...
1126.
Now, the numbers are different.
It'll be 1122. So this is 1118. This is supposed to be 1122 King. They, she's had this mislabeled over here, so. So here's the lot line that's proposed to be adjusted, the lot line that is shared amongst the two lots. Propose to move that 20 feet to the east and 36 feet north-south. This is what it looks like on the ground. You have a 10,807-square-foot lot with 1118. You have a 7,200-square-foot lot with 1122, proposing to shift that line 20 feet to the east and, and 36 feet tall. And so that'll be the adjustment, with, that'll result in 1118 being 10,807 square feet in size, and 1122 being 6,480 square feet in size.
Makes a lot of sense. Access for the eastern property is off of Queen?
It's off of Queen.
And access for the western one is off of King?
Correct. Yeah, there's an existing driveway off of King here for 1118. They currently use Queen Road, which I had mentioned before, is private, but they have an easement for access on that. Would essentially create a flagpole lot, because you'd have a, a lot that has a 40-foot-wide access, and then it goes out into a 60-foot, a 60-foot-wide lot at the main portion there, so.
Is it, is it really a flagpole?
Yeah, I mean, it meets our definition. We don't specify that...
It is not what we normally see as flagpole lots.
It's not. Usually you have a, a flagpole lot that has a 20-foot width, which is our, our minimum, so that's, you know, at least what they have to be. You know, when you go back to the definition of what the flagpole lot is, so it's providing access to part of the lot designated for use as a, a building site by a narrow corridor, but there is no, you know, direction as to how wide that can be.
20 feet's wider than county roads.
Yeah. Well, it, it, it meets our definition, so there, you know, it, it, it meets the 20 feet, which is the required width.
Does it meet the definition, Mike, because we say it does, or does it, because it's not defined in there? I mean, I'm, I'm, it looks to me more like a peculiar-shaped lot than a flagpole lot.
Yeah, it is, but, you know, the flagpole portion of the flag lots, so these are the, the specific requirements for those, can't exceed 150 feet in length, and it can't be less than 20 feet in width. So, you know, based upon our interpretation of what a flaglot is, you know, based upon that definition there, that this proposed lot would meet that requirement.
Go back, go back to your aerial with the change, please. So by declaring it a flagpole lot, that front small building has to be removed?
It does, yeah. When we go from a regular lot to a flagpole lot, typically you take the front yard setback. On this lot would be measured from the, the front property line here, so you'd go 15 feet back, well, 20 in the case of a, of a garage. With a flagpole configuration, we would take that front yard setback from the, the midpoint of the access portion of the lot, and then you'd measure a radius of 15 feet from here, and that would be your front yard setback. And so that would require the garage to be removed on, on that portion of the property, so that would be one of our recommended conditions on this.
Do they want to remove the garage?
Uh, yeah, they're willing to remove the garage.
Do they want to remove the garage?
I don't think that matters.
Well, it sounds like it.
Just a second, please. Do they want to remove it?
Well, they do in order to accommodate a future development that they're going to end up being, you know, building on the site, and this is the reason for the...
I guess I'm just questioning why, why we're declaring it a flagpole lot and requiring the removal of that structure, when I can see how you can say it's a flagpole lot, but it's so wide, I don't know why we have to when our definition in the code does not specify what the width is, other than we deal with not less than 20.
Yeah, we just have the minimum width. Well, this is, you know, they submitted the lot line adjustment knowing that they would need to remove the garage. That's why they have it noted on the plans. It's in order to accommodate a future development, they're in, you know, they, they have plans in our office in order to construct a couple of single-family dwellings on 1118, and in order to meet the rear yard setback, they need 20 feet, and so this is the reason for the 20-foot shift on that property line combining the two. So they were aware that they needed to remove the garage.
So our defining of it as a flagpole lot is not pushing them towards something they really don't want to do?
No. It would be more accommodating them in their development of the parcel, yeah.
The only question I had had to do with planning and zoning, we had a lot of conversation about flag, flagpole configurations, and I remember that that wasn't seen as like a conducive design. Do you remember those conversations about all the flagpole conversations with that lot configuration? I mean, I understand the reason they're doing it is because they want to do so, but do you remember that conversation about flagpole shape and what that meant or didn't mean in terms of development?
I don't remember that specific conversation, but, you know, usually in older neighborhoods, the, you have opportunities to densify, and flagpoles just allow you that opportunity because sometimes you have structures that are built towards the front of the lot, and then there may be a larger area in the portion of the backyard, which could be developable, and flagpoles just allow that opportunity for some infill development in existing neighborhoods, and so that's really the, you know, what, what flagpole lots serve as far as the densification of existing areas, and so...
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's actually, it was, yeah, so you're reminding me of what it was. And so there was a big conversation about density, but they're already, they're in this place where they're allowed to be that dense.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that's what I'm trying, I was just trying to remember why that conversation come up, came up, and why flagpole lots had some sort of flag in my mind, so, there we go.
We don't have a whole lot of...
I remember.
Flagpole lots. Not, not like the Lewiston Orchards does, where they've got such huge lots, and a lot of people have split them up in order to get more houses.
Yeah, you know, when they, you know, when they initially plat these lots, usually they're pretty close, you know, fairly close to the minimum lot size, and so there's not a whole lot of opportunities. You know, you'd have to have a larger lot that's in a, maybe a multifamily zone that would be allowed to be divided up like that, but, yeah, we don't, you know, there, there's usually a few in every neighborhood, but there's not, you know, one on every block type, type of thing.
Well, maybe this will help with fair and affordable housing, right? If they, they go to do some development that is smaller.
You might.
That was kind of along the lines of what I was thinking. Is there any advantage or disadvantage specifically to this flagpole lot for the city? Other than potentially an advantage of maybe allowing some, maybe more affordable housing or...
In general, you mean?
Yeah, just in general. I, see, I don't see any problem with this at all, but I wanted to try and take a bigger view.
Well, it, it allows density in these existing areas, allows for the division of ownership, so, you know, if they could combine, certainly combine all these properties and build, you know, what they're proposing to do on those without having this configuration, you know, if they just wanted to have one ownership, but it allows for multiple ownership of the different parcels, you know, allows for the densification of these existing areas, you know, those are the real advantages in our, in our book.
So in our code, if we want, you know, you know how we always have developers, and they have to come and put in sidewalks when things become more dense, and I know the parking is always addressed, is that, does that get addressed also when we allow more dense development?
Yeah, as soon as you build a new principal structure on a, a piece of property, whether or not there's one already existing on that property or not, you're required to improve the infrastructure if it's deficient. So if there's no sidewalk, the developer would be required to install one. If there's no curb, they'd be required to do that. If the street wasn't paved, then they'd be responsible for paving half of the street just adjacent to the frontage of the lot. So, yeah, those all kick in. As soon as there's a principal structure, the, a building permit is pulled for that, so.
So that'd be a long-term advantage, wouldn't it? A little bit?
It would, yeah. I mean, it, you know, sometimes in older neighborhoods, you have deficient infrastructure, and it would just allow that incremental increase in, you know, infrastructure in those areas, and...
Well, if there's anything we need over on Queen, it's more density. What about parking? Is it going to be required to be on-site?
Correct.
With their new development?
Yeah, we, we allow part, off-street parking to be satisfied on that lot or adjacent lots, and so there'll be a, a more of a, a configuration where they're utilizing all three of those parcels on the screen there in order to achieve the off-street parking, but, yeah, there's four dedicated off-street parking spaces right now on 1122. It's only a single-family dwelling, so technically they're only required to have a couple, so, yeah, it would meet all off-street parking requirements right now. So, yeah, it would meet all off-street parking requirements right now.
Because you can, you can barely get through that place.
I thought you were being sarcastic.
No, I mean, I was pointing out a fact. It's, it's, it's nothing if not challenging to try to drive through there, especially when you get farther east up in the corners.
Yeah, it's, you know, you start hitting some topography once you head up Queen and around this apartment complex in particular. But, you know, it's right next to the University of Idaho and, you know, that would be advantageous to, you know, maybe leave your car at home when you go to school, so.
Okay.
Walk.
Anything else?
No, I think this sounds good.
Okay.
We want to put it on consent.
Yes.
Yep, you can go on consent.
Sweet.
With that condition?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
With your condition. Okay, next-
Nice to meet you.
Next is a, thank you. Good job. Next, we have our annual excitement with Les McDonald talking about the Moscow city limits. It's a thrilling topic.
Annual excitement. This is a big deal.
It's a really big deal.
Well, just so you know, it really was in my fourth grade class today because we were using the Moscow map and so, we had a large conversation about the city limits. So, it kind of is a big deal.
Well, this is one of those things we wait all year. We do.
Okay, sweet.
It is, it is a requirement of the Idaho state statutes that every city municipality within the state declare its corporate limits on an annual basis. Many years, that is a very simple little process that says, oh, nothing's changed. And so, we're going to use the same limit that we used back in 2013, for instance. However, occasionally, and this is one of those years, we actually did do some annexations. So, the map here shows the two that occurred in 2016. The first of those was the, what we call the Shireman Annexation down here off of Robinson Park Road, out the area where the old Slurper and Burke was located, the folks that know that. So, Terry Shireman and family annexed that area into the city. And then, the second piece was a portion of what was trail property that was acquired from Logos School with their intention for a future school there. And that's also where the proposed high school is going to go at one point in time. So, that same piece of land on the northeast part of town, just east of Mountain View Park. So, those are the two annexations that occurred. With that, the corporate limits of the city then need to be modified to reflect those annexations. So, in your packet, you have two ordinances. The second one of those in order in the packet was actually the 2013-01 ordinance, which was the last one passed that involved a change to the corporate limits. So, that's the legal description within that ordinance that we've been operating under since 2013. And then, the first one within the packet is the 2016 blank zero. It'll be 01 presumably. Um, or, excuse me, I'm sorry. If we do this as 16, it'll be whatever the 16 number is. I'm used to doing these after the first of the year. So, this has a revised legal description, which reflects those two changes in the overall boundary to the city proper. So, pretty straightforward ordinance that would be up for council for consideration for adoption to set our corporate limits.
Yeah?
I don't have any.
Not for me.
Is there any way we can do this not by title only, but have the mayor read the whole thing?
Hmm.
Just, just, just kidding. Just kidding, Mayor.
He was just making sure you were listening. That's all that was.
How many Vincis and-
You could watch less than the audience with his finger following to make sure it's read correctly. Okay, all right. We will, can we consent this or do we, does, we normally have, we haven't consented it. We put it on regular.
This one goes on regular because it is an ordinance.
It's an ordinance, okay, you're correct. Regular agenda.
Sweet. Thank you.
That was kind of exciting. It was.
Okay. Get back to where I belong. See where we are.